...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll hold the meeting to order. First, Barb, you're here. Come on up if you'd like. And we're going to extend your time a little bit more because...
I wasn't clear if you were coming or not, so I figured we'd just give you time at the beginning.
Yep. I guess I am back to parking on Highway 19. I feel I've got good news. After watching The Dairy Queen and UFC blocks, what with their multiple parking lots, alleys, intersections, side block parking and parking on State Highway 19, we've had no problems. I know we all panicked when the stoplights came out. I was very concerned about safety as everyone here was. But as to date, there's been no issues. I appreciate you granted me side parking, but semis don't go that direction. And with the side parking and with my side block sign, when a semi's going 30, once you get to the intersection, there's no way it can brake and turn and see that. So I guess I'm back once again asking for semi parking on the highway. I'm up at the cafe 70, 75 hours a week. I watch the intersections and traffic come and go all the time. And I don't see any reason why I can't stay back far enough where you could put a space. Doesn't have to be for a huge semi, like for a... Well, I just saw you last week with your pickup and boat, you know? I don't see why they can't park on the highway there, like under the Carmelita sign.
I did have a pickup and boat.
Oh, I thought that was you. Maybe it was. It looked like you. But anyway...
I have it.
Yeah. But, you know, the campers are coming through, trucks and, you know, pickups and fishing boats and whatnot. And it would be nice... As you're coming down Highway 19, you can see clearly that there's parking. You know, it's just the way it is. So I know it would help my sales. I open at 6:00 a.m. every day but Sunday at 10:00. And it would be nice. So... And like I said, I don't see any issues. You know, Winthrop has adjusted to the intersections and the stoplight out and whatnot. And so far, there's been no accidents at The Dairy Queen or UFC, and things are moving along. So... And it's helped a lot with that...
Speed sign.
That speed sign, yes, where it doesn't look like traffic is just flying so fast anymore. It's kind of settled down. So I think that helps a lot. And I don't know. I appreciate... Like I said, I appreciate the side parking, but it's out of the way. The dairy farmer is the wrong direction, and Bartles and everything is the wrong direction. So I don't know how to put up adequate signage to announce to truckers going 25, 30 miles an hour, you know, turn here without putting up some big construction thing, and we don't want that at the intersection anymore. So I like it where people can see and what. But I think if you make a spot that starts like with my sign now centered on my property, if you kind of do something like within that area behind my sign so people can still see, and I don't know, maybe over by Roger Hans or something, then a trucker can either go to UFC or to Monte Cafe if they feel like it. So I would appreciate that. I know that would, like I say, help with my sales somewhat. So... And there's, you know, I know UFC is there at 5:30 in the morning, but I'm opening at 6:00. So sometimes truckers, they just simply want actual bacon and eggs. And I know I've had, you know, the few truckers that have... Very few. And I had this one trucker couple, three days in a row, and they were just furious at me, you know, because they think I'm asking for the block to be painted yellow, which I'm not. And they said, "Well, we have to park down by the school." So then they says... They asked me, "Well, why can we park by the school when kids are coming and going and we can't park here?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." So it just... It would help me out a lot. So like I say, if The Dairy Queen and UFC can handle it, and I'm the only block in town painted totally yellow, so I think I should be allowed some parking spot somewhere on the highway like everywhere else within the Winthrop city limits. So that's what I have to say. So I'll give you another month to think about it or whatever and put me back on the agenda and look at your options. Or when you drive... I know Don Lenoi drives by the cafe every day, and when you drive, you know... Well, he does, you know, or you, Pete, and you, Kelly, and take a look and see what may or may not work.
I don't know. To be honest with you, I just... I think it's a huge problem. That intersection scares me. If I'm in my pickup, I can't see under your sign anymore. Then I have to crawl out into the intersection. And if somebody is parked, if a semi's parked over here illegally, I can't see in either direction. I almost got hit pulling out.
That happened to me today. Not on her side then. I was coming from the north.
Yeah, even on the side. Sometimes you can't see on The Dairy Queen.
No.
There was a semi in front of Sansky's house. And so I wanted to go to the right. I pulled out, and I was out too far, and a semi was... A grain truck was coming from the east, and I had to go backwards real fast.
So we are going to be talking about this this week?
Yep. But, you know, that's part of having a driver's license and part of managing traffic. And I know every morning when I go to work, you know, I can't see past The Dairy Queen building, but it's there, and you just have to just adjust to it. So...
All right.
It's just... I, you know, I wouldn't mind if my block was yellow if there were other blocks yellow. Then I told that to Jenny, and I don't have a problem with that. But for me, being the only odd block with a business on Highway 19, which I assumed would allow truckers to park there, it just keeps... It feels odd. It doesn't feel right. So, you know, if you want to paint more on Highway 19 yellow, fine. But until there's conformity, until it looks normal with the rest of the blocks, then I feel I would like to be normal. I would like to blend and fit in with sales and other parking issues and what's...
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak at the open public forum? If not, we'll go to approve the agenda. Don, did you everything yet?
No, sir.
Pete? Jewel?
Nope.
Jenny?
I'm Sunday Liquor, but I'll bring it up in my report.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. You consent the agenda. Everybody have a chance to take a look at everything. We'll look at the claims. Any questions? For the construction project?
What... I know what that CUP is, but I don't really understand what's happening.
The UFC?
I can explain that if you want.
Go ahead, Don.
So back to two and a half years ago, when UFC originally got the conditional use permit for their diesel island, we... The city made the conditional use permit to go only two years. And then at the end of the two years, they needed to get an extension. The reason being is the city puts a lot of conditions on UFC, and there were a lot of concerns at that time about the effect that the diesel island would have on the neighborhood. So the thought process was make it conditional. That way, two years out, we would touch base, take a look at everything, see if there's any problems, see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted. So the two years is up, and now the recommendation is to make it permanent.
So the planning commission did approve... They met all the conditions. There haven't been complaints or anything, and the truck parking or the...
We held a public hearing at the planning commission. I mean, nobody came.
No one showed up.
The only thing left to do is for us to paint the curb yellow in front of Mary Jennings. And Gordy has that on his list for when they come and paint before Fun Fest, and that's going to get painted yellow.
So we need to talk about... Barb, it was good timing. We do need to...
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
I thought we had that resolved, but I guess we don't.
Yep, thanks, Jenny. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion unless there's any further questions on anything else here.
So this is permanent, the CUP?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
That's it. You're done. Yeah, he came from UFC. They had any questions.
Oh, I was wondering about Tony. Hi, Tony!
Hi, Tony. Darv couldn't make it tonight, so Tony came in his place.
Okay. The next day, a public hearing is construction project. Brian?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm just basically here just to give a brief update on how the project's going. We sent out another newsletter. I believe maybe you might have sent it out this morning or...
Friday, Melissa sent it out.
Okay. So basically, what's going on now is they're essentially done with the utilities from Nicklet Street to the east to Main Street. And right now, they have basically the subgrade essentially farmed out to let it dry out a little bit. And then they plan to get that degraded, and then hopefully get that put down in that section this week. So then, once that's done, then residents in that area should be able to drive up to their house, at least until the blacktopping stuff starts later on.
So they will put one layer of blacktop on this year?
Yes, yep. Yep, similar to the 2015 project. Yep. But in the meantime, until that gets done, they will be able to get to their house, at least that section, once it's gravelled.
Are they going to remove all that that he was... He had the dozer in there, and I bet you he had...
In the east of Nicklet Street?
Where they finished. I thought, to dry it or...
Yep, basically to dry it out so they can get the adequate compaction for it.
Where they're...
Yep, yep. I was out there today before, and they don't have it. It's not huge piles, but it's essentially plowed. I mean, it's plowed up, basically.
Plowed.
Yep, yep.
Where are they putting it to dry out?
It's just right in the road.
In the street?
Yep, yep.
Well, they're hauling truckload after truckload out.
Oh, they're ripping up the west end.
Yep. So basically, right now, or they... This week, they started removals basically on the next portion of the project west of Nicklet Street. And they don't have that all quite done, but I'm sure they'll finish that tomorrow. And then, once that's done, then they'll start working on the sanitary sewer in that area, you know, and then they'll follow up with the water main and the storm sewer.
Parking or getting the people that are living in that area, are they going to be able to...
I talked, actually had a complaint today, and I talked to Bill about it. Maybe he told you about it.
Okay. I haven't talked to Bill about any complaints today, but...
They would like the first half of Redwood block or maybe the full block reserved for resident parking, because right now, there's construction equipment, and the crew's parking there, and they have to park like two blocks back. And if they're carrying groceries and things like that, it gets to be a long haul.
I know they do have some of the larger storm pipe and things like that staged there, so I suppose they'd have to get that moved or staged somewhere else.
And I told them to, even if you got to put it in the park or whatever.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah. I can talk to Bill about that and see if he's talked to, you know, the O'Meyer guys about that today. But I haven't talked to him about that.
But that power line wasn't behind there. Do we have a right of way behind there?
Behind.
Oh, yeah.
How is this?
Yes, you do. Just work on it.
Just utilities.
Well, there's no road there, but I mean...
There's probably, yeah, a limited utilities.
Is that an alley?
You're talking about on the north side.
That's the next street going to the north. Future.
Futures. Ninth Street.
Jenny, I talked to our lady today, and I told her we were to bring her the groceries in when she needs it.
Okay.
She was fine with that.
Okay. Millers?
No.
Right.
Oh.
The one to the west.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully they move right along with the water main and get that part done.
Yep, yep.
It's inconvenient.
Yep, yeah, that's definitely the... We're getting into the stretch now where there's going to be, you know, it's harder to maintain that access, I mean, all day. But, you know, it's kind of just the nature of the beast, I mean, in a lot of ways with that stretch. But we are, as part of the plans, we do have that they have to close up that intersection of Redwood and Eighth every night so that people can walk across. I mean, they can't drive to their house, but, you know, at least they're not walking two blocks or, you know. We're trying to minimize the access impacts. But I know that has been a concern, I guess, throughout the project.
All right.
Otherwise, I guess that's pretty much it for now. We're just keep plugging along. I mean, we had, you know, one week where it was a little wet. They couldn't work a couple of days. But I think for the most part, we've had some pretty good luck, you know, knock on wood, I guess. But it's been going fairly smooth. And it helps that there aren't as many services on this project compared to the last project, so that helps move along a little quicker.
They work late.
They do. All right. Well, thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
All right, fiber.
Do we have to approve this driver's license?
We do.
It's in the consent agenda.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Brummer.
So I was just going to give you a quick update of our plans for this year and where we are. We're going to be starting work in those four additional communities of Broughton, Stewart, Buffalo Lake, and Fairfax, probably within the next couple of weeks. The project is still moving forward. I know there's a lot of rumors and things about we're bankrupt and all those kinds of things, and that is absolutely not true. So I wanted to make that clear.
That's absolutely not true.
That is absolutely not true.
No, I actually wanted to hear it. I actually wanted to repeat. I didn't hear anything like that.
No, but I've actually heard from people. So it is not true. We are moving forward. Those four towns are going to be built this year, and we're hooking up about 100 customers a month, so...
So our heads are above water?
Heads are above water.
So theirs are going as planned?
Fake meetings.
Yes. It's never as fast as everyone has planned, but, yeah, we're still moving forward.
I had to get one jab in, Toby.
I know. I was expecting it. Jenny wants fiber at her house.
Too old to enjoy it.
Well, you know, we should enjoy more of it.
Yeah.
He's busy here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to go home tonight and...
Oh, yeah, thanks, Don. Just rub it in.
I don't even need glasses anymore.
I have talked to some people in Gibbon who've recently got it, and they love it. They just love it, so...
Good.
Well, I have to say, I had to call today because I had a... Wondered about our internet speed. And I got a real person, and she said, "Well, I should send somebody out. How does tomorrow work?" So, I mean, less than 24 hours from when I called, there's going to be somebody there. So it was... That was very refreshing.
That's good to hear.
And we did switch the city phones over now too, and Mackenzie has been very good to work with. She's very attentive and very helpful, so...
But Fairfax, they'll have all the medical stuff in when you're old.
Yeah. Thanks, Pete.
We're going to... We've got some work to do before we actually start in Fairfax. We're actually going to start in Broughton first. But it won't be long after we'll be in Fairfax.
I hope you don't live there anymore.
So probably within, I would say, four weeks or so, we'll be in Fairfax, starting anyway. I was just there today.
From the west side.
From the west.
Yeah, right, exactly.
All right. Thank you very much, Toby.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions?
I have a son that lives in Apple Valley, and he would just love to have the service we have on the internet. He said it's amazing, so...
Well, that's good to hear as well.
He's here or not.
Good. I'm glad to hear all of those positive things. Thank you very much. I will pass those on.
Great. I appreciate you coming up here and updating us. Feel free to do this anytime.
Okay.
I think people like to hear how the project's going.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Yep. Okay. Ryan and Aaron Jacobson.
Don, you want a date?
Sure. So about 17 months ago, we... The city sold... We have that addition that we've had since about 2002 where a council member, Malheim, lives. That was developed about 2002. At the time that it was developed, there were certain covenants that were made part of the development about you have to have a certain type of house, things like that. About 17 months ago, Ryan and Aaron Jacobson bought a lot. And their intent when they bought, of course, was to build a house in conformance with the covenants. However, we've been informed now that they are no longer intending to build and that they just wanted to sell the lot themselves. The complication is that one of the covenants says that you have to build a house on the lot within 18 months. And if you don't build within 18 months, then the lot reverts back to the city. Now, the council created those covenants. You're the ones that created them. You're the only one that has the power to change them if that's what you want to do. Now, my memory of why that covenant was in there was to encourage quick building and quick development of the lots. Now, of course, that was 2002 or 2017, and we've only sold like four during this entire time. So I don't know if those concerns are still there because we're having difficulty selling, building, whatever. But ultimately, that's the decision is, are we... June 30th, 18 months is up. Does the council want you to take steps to get the lot back, or do you just want to let them have it?
What is the cost of a lot?
Well, it's a dollar plus assessments, and their assessments were just over $5,000. And they paid them. They did pay them. I've tried on numerous occasions to get ahold of them. Did you...
I didn't. I didn't today. I didn't talk to her.
And they just don't respond. So I don't know what their intent is anymore.
Well, obviously, it's not to build, but...
Right.
Do they just want to get rid of it?
I think they would. One time I did talk to her, I thought they wanted to sell it.
Wouldn't it be difficult to sell one out there if one next to it is a dollar?
But it's a dollar, but then you have to pay the assessments.
Right.
So it's...
So they probably just want to get their money out of it.
They want the $5,000 for the lot, yeah. That's what I would assume. $5,001.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah.
The first thing that comes to mind for me is, well, what would stop a developer from coming in and buying all the lots for a dollar? Well...
You'd have to pay the assessments.
Exactly. And that's maybe okay. Then it's paid for the city, too.
And I think there's some that have $10,000 or $11,000 assessments, aren't there?
There's one or two that have.
Yeah.
The lots?
Assessments against...
The assessments.
When the city put in the water, sewer, and streets and Kirby gutter, you know, they have an assessment against the lots. That's what we're carrying.
So basically, you're buying them for the cost.
How come some of them are more than others?
Just more work.
Yeah. It's like per footage, yeah.
Well, we can get you into one of those ones that are more expensive.
Never building a house.
I would suggest that you, if it's okay with Don, that you kind of give it a month, maybe two, and talk to the...
I don't think we can make a decision tonight.
And Don and I talked about it this afternoon, and if they're going to turn around and sell the lot and make a profit on it, that's kind of one thing. But if they just want to cash out what they got into it and turn it over to somebody who actually wants to build, that's not a bad thing. But when you do that, you... The covenants are no longer in place, so...
Yeah. If we make that decision, we'd be hard pressed to enforce later on.
Really, it doesn't... To me, it doesn't... If somebody purchases that lot and they pay the assessments on it, the city has got their money out of it then. So, you know, the covenant, why do you have to build it 18 months? I'm not... I understand they want to hurry up and do it. I would just be happy to sell the lots and get the assessments paid on it, so...
We can wait a month, but it needed to be addressed before June 30th, so...
I see no problem with Mark's suggestion, just waiting and talking.
There aren't people waiting in line to buy the lots either?
That's what I'm kidding. Somebody wants to buy a lot, pay the assessment, that's a big investment.
Yeah.
And I don't see a developer coming in, buying all the lots, paying all the assessments, turning around and sell it. And well, even if they do, it gets back on the...
I can put it on next month's agenda.
Why don't we do that? We'll table things, but I want a little more time here.
That's a good idea. Okay.
What would council suggest?
Deal with a scholarship.
What's that?
What would you suggest, Don?
Well, I like Mark's idea the best, just to take some time, talk with him, get a better idea of what's going on. I don't think the need for that covenant is as needed now.
I agree.
No. We were hopeful that when it was created, that we were going to move all the lots.
There was a housing...
Yeah.
It was?
Well, it was... 2008 is when it all went south. All right. Any further discussion on that? Then we'll table this till next month. We'll try and speak with them again. And just look further into it. Council, look at it yourselves and see if you think the covenant is still needed.
I'll check with Eric.
Mm-hmm.
See what's up.
All right. Peddlers ordinance, first reading.
I thought our peddler's ordinance or nonexistent peddler policy could use a little updating. So I read through Gaylord and Arlington's, and Arlington seemed to be a good fit for Winthrop. So I talked to Don about it. He jazzed it up for Winthrop and thought I'd present it to you guys. We don't have to do anything, but it's here if you want to.
Can you read it? How many pages is it?
It is five pages.
You're kidding.
No, it's... I can give you just the quick flip notes version. So as a whole, people coming around, going door to door and selling and that stuff is prohibited. There is certain conduct on city property for selling on city property that is allowed, but you need to get a permit to do so. There's also exceptions for your nonprofit organizations to do fundraising, things like that. But it's just designed... Right now, if someone comes and they just want to sell goods door to door and bother people, there's nothing that we really have to prohibit that.
Right now, we request that they come in and give us a copy of their driver's license and tell us what they're selling, but we don't have anything official.
They should have some badge or something, though, so that I know that they've been. I mean, even if you have an ordinance, how do I know they stopped it?
Well, I see people coming and selling beef, you know, steaks, fish.
They never stop at City Hall.
Right. That would be prohibited, though, correct?
Well, they'd have to follow the process.
Right.
Like schwanz would be prohibited.
Yeah, how about schwanz?
Professional, professional, commercial businessmen and sellers like that are exempt under the ordinance.
Well, I would think then that would take care of those meatmen, too, because they sound pretty legit. They're only from Iowa.
No, but it's always their last package of meat.
It's always their last package.
Well, I brought the last package.
Right, you brought that.
I've got one left, Dean.
Our intent is just to prohibit those scenarios where you have people who we can't vouch for their credentials, and they're just walking around town selling. There's been complaints in the past about things like that.
Cleaner and Kirby vacuums.
But seriously, they should have some identification or a badge that they bent to City Hall.
How about religious?
Religious organizations are exempt.
No, of course. I have no problem with beating up that ordinance.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So if you wish to do so, tonight's just the first reading. It'll come back in July for a second reading.
I thought that... I couldn't follow all that with school stuff at the end there. It was a whole bunch of stuff in there, but...
Okay. Do we need a motion on the first reading now?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion for the first reading.
So we'll...
Second.
Aide and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. All who oppose, same side. Motion carries. Sump pump hookup ordinance, first reading.
This ordinance, Gordy and I and Joel had talked on separate occasions about requiring people to hook their sump pumps up if there is a stub in place underground. Our last project, we have one that has yet to hook it up. It's laying on top of the ground. It's draining into the street, and there's a stub there. So, we would like to enforce for that and going forward, that if there's a stub under the ground, you need to hook your sump pump up to that. You want anything more to say anymore about it?
The leisure, there's, there's some pumps coming out onto the street, to the curb, then go by another house. Eventually, it's gonna turn slimy green on top, and I don't think the neighbors want that on his curb, you know? And since we got the tile underneath the ground, let's hook that up, you know?
So, that's all new construction there?
Yes. Give them a two-year, three-year, whatever it takes.
Why would people not want to hook it up?
Cost, I suppose.
Oh, they're...
Do we have a stub at our place?
Do we have a stub at our place?
No.
No.
So, you don't. Someday you will.
Well, you got the ordinance. The ordinance is already there.
What's this first ordinance?
No, we have to pass this.
Oh, I thought we had the ordinance.
No, we need to pass, we don't have anything on the books for that.
I thought we did that a long time ago when we, uh, had all that sump pump.
They couldn't have the sump pump going into the sanitariums.
Right.
They cover that.
Yeah.
Okay.
My checkbook is still feeling that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any questions?
Here again, it's just the first reading. The second reading in July.
Need a motion?
Yep.
Throw vote.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not, proceed to vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same side. Motion carries. Armored Reserve Building.
So, you, Mayor.
Okay, well, apparently, the last, um, open house is this Friday.
Yep, ten to two.
Ten to two, and then they're gonna have a closing date after that.
Yes, they'll announce the closing after the second.
And you ask people to talk to councilman or myself, and have people talk to you, you have some feelings on it.
I talked to one of the neighbors in that area. Um, he said, he, if, if the price was reasonable, he thought the city should buy it.
What is considered reasonable?
You know, at that time, there were no bids, so, you know, we knew the minimum was fifty. I was at a garage sale, and, you know, there were three or four people there, and they said, yeah, that sounds good. But at the same time, they said, you know, if it's gonna cost us a lot of money and, um, in the long run, they weren't, you know, they didn't want to pour a ton of money into it.
We had that meeting uptown at, at Hollins. What was the amount that we sent the city to go to?
I thought it was sixty.
Twenty-five?
I thought we were talking twenty-five, maybe it was...
Somebody told me they thought it was fifty.
Okay.
I, we did, I remember that number floating around.
Fifty?
I think that, yeah.
Okay.
So, we're in excess of that by ten thousand already.
So, we're out of the bidding.
Well, we, we haven't made a bid. I mean, I mean, if we were just going by that meeting, fifty thousand was a reasonable number by that group that thought that, uh...
More than likely, I'm guessing closing will be before the next council meeting, I'm thinking. So, if you guys are interested, we'd either have to hold a special meeting to decide that.
I've heard a lot of people not wanting it, but sixty thousand or even sixty-five, it sounds cheap to me for a piece of property. But I don't know what we're gonna use it for. That's the problem.
I know.
And I've heard two, uh, two groups of people that would like to get it. One group says, we wanted to control it, to put in housing. Somebody comes in with an apartment building, and we've got a spot for them, we can give it to them, boom, it's all ready to go. So, it'd be nice if the city controlled it. The other group of people would like it as a community center, uh, where, you know, different organizations could use it, utilize it for, for whatever. So, that's an issue, too, is we have two groups of people that would like to get it for the city, but yet, they're looking at it from two different standpoints and how we use it.
Have you been in the building?
I've been in the building. Small rooms, I know.
They're just little rooms.
Well, you could remodel those, but I thought we told Harlan Gurkey we were gonna put, put that junkyard out there.
Oh, God. He'd have been here tonight.
He did. I told him that, remember? We're gonna put our impound cars in there.
He was at the open house, I think, wasn't he? Or he was at the, the public hearing at last month's meeting.
Yeah, he was here at the meeting.
Gordy, what's that shed like?
Needs a lot of work. They put a lot of stuff inside, shelves. I can't even get to greater into it right now.
I'm, I'm kind of on the fence about it. I, I don't want to spend a lot of money, and yet, some of that does make sense to me, that maybe the city should have some control of it. But I'm not sure exactly how much that's worth.
Well, I'm against spending that kind of money on it. We gotta worry about the Bauer Building. I don't know how that's going. I mean, what are we gonna do with all these properties here, you know?
Isn't the Bauer Building EDA?
Yes.
So, that's not really a city. I mean, it's not directly...
Eventually, it will be.
We'll talk about it, yeah. What's your feeling?
Well, like I say, I've heard nobody that, that really wanted it with, with, uh, had a use for it. Now, if they're gonna use it for a center, are the people who are gonna use it, are they gonna pay the utilities and the taxes or whatever, or are they gonna come back to the city, you know? But on the other hand, you know, it, it's a pretty nice piece of property, too.
It's low land.
So, what's it worth to the city?
Don't ask me.
Well, and I think that the overall pressure...
It was appraised, wasn't it?
Yeah.
What was the appraisal?
Six hundred and fifty thousand or something.
Well, that was their asking price, but the...
That was, that was what the county had it valued at, six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, we, we missed, we missed the hands property. Remember, they wanted a million dollars? And we kind of sat on it and sat on it, and then it went for, what, two, three hundred thousand?
I did talk to some of the people from the Bets Club. They were, they were thinking it. Um, what is the EDA thing?
We've had several discussions on it. You, you've been there for a couple. Julie's been there. Um, uh, it's kind of like what you guys are thinking. You know, how much is too much, and, and you don't want to, uh, not have somebody get it who's gonna do the right thing. But how do you know the person that's gonna get it is gonna do the right thing? And, and, uh, I talked to a gentleman today who I think is a pretty savvy. He thought sixty thousand dollars was a, was a really good price for that piece of property. He thought a hundred thousand dollars was probably what it was worth. Uh, so, somebody might be getting a deal. I think the, the city's no longer interested in twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. I just, you know, if, if it was gonna go that cheap, I think you guys should grab it. But it's gonna go on the tax rolls now. It's never been on the tax rolls in fifty years, you know? It's, it's gonna go on the tax rolls, and, and there's some to what Bob says. Uh, we have some property in town, you know, and, and we don't need to have it all. I don't know what we do with it, Kelly. I mean, if the medical school goes through, I know that's a big if. Everybody keeps talking about it. It could be a, a housing thing, and maybe that's what the person has in mind. I mean, I, I just, it's gonna go on the tax roll. Somebody's gonna buy it for a decent price, and maybe they're gonna do something with it, so...
What kind of control does the city have? I mean, say someone buys it, and I, obviously, we have no idea what the bidders have in mind. But, you know, there's a shed there. What if they, you know, want to park a bunch of stuff and...
Well, they would have to be held to the same standards as everybody else as far as the nuisance code.
So, there would be...
Couldn't have more than three things sitting there.
On that entire property.
Right.
Okay.
Because it's, it's one parcel, correct?
And, and we got zoning control, and that's, if, if someone was going to bring in something that most of us would object to, they would have to get it rezoned. Right now, it's very limited in its zoning, and what you can actually use it for, so you can, you have some guarantees that way in that some, it's not gonna be a disaster for the city, whoever it is.
And I haven't looked real closely at the online listing. Is that really clearly stated, that, what it's zoned?
I'm not sure. I don't remember.
Well, isn't that owned by the federal government?
It zones, uh, public semi-public.
Even though it's owned by the federal government, it's, our zoning still controls.
And the zoning right now is R one, two, and three, which is residential, uh...
Multi-family.
Multi-family. There are a lot of ifs out there. That's the problem. There's a lot of unknowings, and it, it's a gamble. The city were to, it's going to be more than sixty thousand.
Think so?
Well, it's gonna, it has to be if we...
Well, yeah, yeah.
Then it's, uh, bringing it up to, um, making sure that the heat system and all of it works.
If the city bought it and wanted to put a community center in there, would we have to do a public hearing on that, or could we just do whatever we wanted with it?
Well, you could choose to have a public hearing, I, because it is public semi-public. The city has the ability to, you know, create buildings, build buildings, make something, so... But you, even though there's not a requirement, you can still do it if you want.
What will we do with this building?
Well, we would still utilize this building. I mean, they're just talking, a community center for local organizations, that's it.
You know, like the school, they need an egg shop, and they need a wood shop there, and they want to spend all this money. You could buy something like that for sixty thousand or sixty. I don't think they would, it's not...
There'd be a lot of renovation. I mean, you purchase for public. I mean, the bathrooms have to be brought up, the coal, everything.
I understand, but I'm saying is, it's not forty-seven million.
I think the school district has their hands full right now without worrying about that.
With what? Well, how can they have their hands full? With what?
Well, let's not talk about school district. Let's talk about city, but, um, what would you people like to do? One option is doing nothing.
That's my feeling.
I guess that's what you do. You're gonna use it.
If we don't know for sure, we're gonna do with it. Well, Julie, you got a different idea?
I, well, I said before, I mean, I think there's, I can see some value in the city having the ability to have input as to what's gonna happen with that property. Or, you know, if there's a need for housing, we've...
By the way, the, the city owns lots to the west of it, as does Winthrop Opportunities. There's a couple of lots that are privately owned across the street from Doug Hanson, from the fence on the west side of the, of the, uh, of the facility to the apartment building.
Is that where they practice football?
No, that's what Winthrop Opportunities owns. We own some land in between that and Doug Hanson Street.
Yeah, there's a street.
It's all planted, but it's just, there's just no streets or alleys there.
So, if somebody came to the city and wanted a place to build, uh, an apartment building, would there be room on that, that the EDA currently owns?
Oh, sure. There, there need to be streets built. I mean, you, you have to build streets to it, but, plus, we own the two lots just to the west of the Triplex, across the street from Amherst. We bought those two lots for a five hundred bucks, or three lots for five hundred bucks, or a hundred bucks each.
I don't remember.
Two or three years ago.
So, we're not hurting for any place to put an apartment building if somebody...
No, we're not. But there'd be some, there'd be some infrastructure that would need to go in there.
Um, we can, we can always call a special meeting if maybe, uh, all of a sudden, there's a group of people that do come forward and say, hey, we think this is important, and this is why, and it's an organized group. I would certainly call a special meeting for that. At this time, um, if someone wants to make a motion and say, yep, I think, uh, the city should go seventy-five thousand on it, we're gonna pay the motion. Or if we don't get that motion, um, at this time, it looks like the city is not going to do anything.
Well, you only got three board members here, too, so maybe that, maybe that special board meeting might change things.
All right.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty comfortable letting it go at the moment if we have the opportunity to call a special meeting, once we know the closing date, if we feel there's a need.
Okay, so, let's hope public come forward and, and, um...
How many people have you had at these special meetings?
The first meeting, what do we have, maybe twenty-five? Do we have that many?
We had quite, quite a few.
Yeah.
And then the meeting we had here, the open public meeting?
Two.
Two?
And then we had two at the work session in May.
Yep, the work session, we, we talked about it, so it's three separate meetings we've had. Okay. If something changes?
Let me know. I'll call a special meeting.
Call a special meeting.
I'll get it posted.
All right, thank you. All right, um, reports. City administrator.
Uh, the egg containment is done. We are back. We got the full repeal back to twenty sixteen. We are good to go.
We really hope you heard that one, yeah. The full repeal. And I want to thank Jenny for all the work she has done.
Absolutely.
A lot of work.
Thank you.
I think Jenny deserves, yes, a lot of recognition for the effort.
Even for the other cities you represented, I mean...
And she no longer has to listen to me saying, hey, what have you heard, what's happened?
And I no longer have to go to St. Paul, so, that's my favorite.
Just like twice, and then we met with the, um, their senator representative.
We were up there plenty, so, I'm not going anymore. No, I'm kidding. Yes, it was.
Okay, go ahead. It's over.
I am glad it's over, yes. Um, I contacted McGrath Monument because Gordy and a couple guys from the, um, honor guard went out to look at the monument and found out, found a sticker on there from the company that originally put it up, and they're still in business. So, I called them, um, to get a price and see if they're willing to move it, because, uh, Newell Monument never got back to me. And, um, he said he'd be interested. I sent him some pictures. He was supposed to send me a quote. I haven't got it yet. Um, he said they can put the cement base up. If we want them to, it'll cost us, of course. Um, but Gordy thought maybe we could find somebody else to do it cheap. But as soon as I get that price quote from them, and I might have to give them a little push and see where they're at with it, because I think they want it moved before they sell the building. But I know the guy that I talked to at McGrath said they were moving one up in Litchfield pretty soon, too, so, obviously, they kind of know what it's about. But somebody said it was cracked.
There's two cracks in that big one. That's why I let that company do it. They know how to move it.
Right, so, we're working on that. Um, the honor guard donated five hundred dollars to the Winthrop ambulance service. Thank you. That's always nice to get a donation from them. Um, Dave Berg won't be, obviously, here to this meeting. He, he's coming July tenth. He didn't quite have the electric rate study done, so he'll be here next month. Um, we already talked about that. Uh, we have, the planning commission interviewed three firms regarding the comp plan, and they will pick one at their June twenty-sixth meeting and have a recommendation for the July council meeting. Um, the Act on Alzheimer's group met last week, and we decided to spend some of the grant money on education and support groups. Uh, all the towns were getting a vote, and then the one that got the most votes would, is where they would spend. That's about four thousand dollars they have to spend. Um, I attended MMUA leadership training, uh, last week or, no, two weeks ago. That's a really great training, and meet four times a year for two years, and, and it's always a good discussion. Um, I also told Amy that I'm interested in being part of the discussion on daycare options. Um, the meeting is twenty sec, the twenty-second of June. I won't be able to attend, but Mark can go in the morning just to see what it's about and how we're gonna proceed with that.
What, what is that about?
Uh, there, Amy's working on a grant to do some kind of study on bringing daycare options. The western part of the county, given mainly, is really hurting for daycare.
Do they know that the school is actually gonna be doing some type of daycare?
Yes, they do, but they still want to talk to this group and have them come in and assess...
W is kinda doing?
Daycare in the whole county, so... Um, I have all the ambulance agreements back and signed except Bismarck. I did email Joanne. She said she's gonna take care of it at the July meeting. Um, the Park Pavilion Committee has a meeting tomorrow morning. Hopefully, we'll have a design done by then. Um, there have been some questions on trees in the perimeter of the park, so I called Avery to come and survey the park. Do you know if he's done that, or...
He had done it, yeah.
What, what's, uh, what, what is, what is the problem up there?
There's a tree that needs to come down, and we're not sure if it's ours or somebody else's, so, um, he's gonna, he's gonna, um, survey it and map it for us.
Well, if it's gonna come down, it's ours.
Might be cheaper than the survey, so... Uh, and Oscar is going to get mulch in the park Wednesday. And then the last thing, um, I talked to Don a while ago when they passed the Sunday liquor, to see if there's anything we needed to do as, on our end for Sunday... to see if there's anything we needed to do on our end for Sunday liquor and he said the new legislation allows off sale between eleven AM and six PM. If you wanna be more restrictive with that, we can, but we'd have to pass an ordinance or amend our ordinance, which we wouldn't get done by July fourth. But you certainly can do that if you like, or if we do nothing, the bars will be able to sell liquor between eleven AM and six PM on Sunday. So, that's up to you guys, and that's it, unless you have anything for me.
You don't need to make that decision tonight, though.
You don't need to.
When is that going to occur?
July.
Oh.
So it just, you don't need to do something tonight, but just know if, by not doing something tonight, it just, if you wanted to make it more restrictive, we'd probably be two months behind.
I, I mean, if that's what the state administration is doing and...
I always thought you had to be able to serve meals and stuff on a Sunday.
That changed.
That's changed, okay.
You can buy, at, starting July fourth, you'll be able to buy off sale, which isn't...
Because of the news.
Which isn't a Sunday, but, you know, the Sunday after.
All right, that's it?
That's it, unless you have anything for me.
No, if you have any, come on up, Mark.
You know, you're really turning great. I'm looking from up here, you know.
You wanna go outside?
Yeah, just appreciate that you have covered it.
I love you.
Sorry, Gordy, I'm sorry. I, well, I am, yeah. Before I start with my summary, I want you to know that Jenny really rang the alarm throughout the state on this tax abatement thing. I mean, she called and wrote cities and she called the league and complained and she started the ball rolling. So the fact that that happened is real, a kudo, it's a feathers in our hat and thanks to Jenny, I just wanted to say that. The other thing I wanna say about Jenny is that she's gonna be speaking at the General Federation of Women's.
So is Chief Johnson.
So is Chief Johnson and so is Jenny and so is Kim, talking about empowering women. And because, I know, Pete, you should go and throw things, I mean, so I just wanted, I just, I wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome, I'll pay for it tomorrow, Don, trust me.
I hope she speaks longer than she does on the radio.
Oh, Jesus, never let me forget that, someday I'm, someday I'm gonna talk for a half an hour, no, I'm not.
Well, let's get into my summary, I expect to sign a contract with the Fairfax EDA here this month to work for them on a part-time basis, their city administrator is leaving at the end of October, she's also the EDA director. They've asked me if I'd come in and help them with some visiting leadership things, it's an interesting opportunity, I'm excited about it. Won't impact my job here at all. They will reimburse the city of Winthrop if, if they do it, I mean, it's not done yet. They will reimburse the city of Winthrop five hundred dollars a month to compensate for my benefits and there'll be an additional ten thousand dollars, that'll go into a special scholarship fund and, and we'll know by the end of the month, but I, hopefully it'll be done by the next council meeting. Housing study update, I've been part of an ad hoc group, a very proud ad hoc group, that is exploring housing options in the county. The EDA, our EDA has agreed to participate in the cost of the housing study, we don't know what it is yet. We are unsure at this time who the participants, who the funding participants are going to be, but Gaylord and Arlington and Winthrop have all said that they would, they are interested in participating. So it's important for a couple of reasons, one, if you take the medicine, if you take the medical school out of the equation, there still is a housing issue in this county, especially in Gaylord with the workforce. And if you throw the medical school into the mix, then you, you really have some issues that you're gonna have to address and this group would like to educate ourselves and you guys about what the options are, 'cause it takes a long time to do a housing project. Shop local campaign, we are participating in the shop local campaign as it begins to take shape. They're having a meeting on the thirteenth and, and we're gonna talk more about that, we're not sure what that is. The Bauer building update, this may be the last update, I just want you guys to know that, the deal should be final in the next day or two. Final paperwork has been signed, taxes have been brought up to date and I, and I corrected myself here, it may be the end of a nearly two-year process, so. What are we gonna do with the building, Bob, you brought that up? We decided that we needed to have some kind of control over it because of, we don't have any buildings in this town. You know, if you look at Fairfax, if you look at Gaylord, if you look at Arlington, they have four, five, six, seven, eight buildings that they have things they can do with, we don't have any. Now, the Sibley interiors building, I've been told by the owner is for sale, they don't have a price on it, but that's a private sale. And the issue with the Bauer building was, if somebody came along and wanted to do something with it, it was going to take a couple of years maybe to get it all cleared up with, with all the trusts and all the family stuff going on. So we did that work, it didn't cost us anything to get it. We're not gonna heat it, we're not, we're gonna turn the water off, we're gonna winterize it, we're not gonna heat it. It will go off the tax rolls, I think it's about fourteen hundred dollars a year. So, a little less than that, so, but now we actually have control over a building that we can do something with in Main Street, but I understand your concerns. And the building demo update, one down and one to go, we got the Tom Miller house down and the second house will be coming down soon, according to Mr. Fandings, he got, he got snafu'd by the weather and then he just got busy, so I think in the next few days, you will see that come down.
I had here, Leslie come up and asked about removing something from that house, what is the process with that? They would have to contact, contact?
Me, me, yeah, they would have to contact me, yeah. Is, are, are they interested, and I, and I don't say that just because it's simple that way. I've had people call me and want to remove something from it and I've given them permission and I've had them sign a waiver. That Don didn't see, but it was a waiver. It, it belongs to the EDA, the EDA bought it, it's, right, I mean, I think...
Yeah, I, and it's, assuming that there's no safety issues.
Right. They took some windows out, these guys wanted to take some windows out. And it's just gonna be a torn up, thrown away anyway, so I, I didn't see any problems with it.
Any proposals for what's going on?
A parking lot right now, Bob, and it'll be gravelled and we're gonna take that cement up back, back by the alley. Yeah, where that garage was and Chris, Mr. Moltzer's gonna have to move his grease in his garbage bins. And then we're gonna gravel it, that tree's coming down. And then we'll probably have to put a fence up between that and the cruise property, just because we wanna be good neighbors. We, you know, if it starts to get used as a parking lot, I wouldn't want headlights flashing into my, my window and stuff, so. We'll make it look like that, was the whole intent, to make it look nicer, 'cause the building was shot, absolutely shot.
Is the city gonna own it?
The EDA owns it, but it will probably be, the EDA bought it, it didn't cost the city anything, but we'll probably put it in the city's name, there are some issues, the EDA can't own land for speculation and if the EDA owns it, we pay property taxes on it, so it's just gonna, the property taxes are very, very little, are very, very little, yeah.
Very good.
Pete, anything?
Oh, I was wondering what happened to the Dairy Queen sign.
It's, I talked to Chris just last week, he told me that they ordered the sign and six days before it was to be delivered, Dairy Queen Corporate changed their specifications for the signs and it was six inches the wrong size, so it's been reordered and remade and he told me it would be up in the next two to three weeks. And the BP property, anybody interested in the BP property?
Yeah, what's happening?
Ah, thank you. Yeah, I know, I was gonna, yeah, we met with the owner, Jason, last week, Dave Treblehorn and I and somebody else from Winthrop Opportunities and, and he's, he's, he's gonna start to work on it. Uh, cleaning up the outside, the timbers and the weeds, you know, it's just...
They were there today.
Right, so, so good, and he's gonna start on the inside, they're gonna extend that west wall out and make it a little bit bigger and they're, he thinks he has somebody going into it, I don't know who or what yet, so he's excited about it and it'll look better here in the next few weeks, we hope, at least, at least by the end of the summer, it'll look better.
So this all have to come before the zoning commission, for whatever goes in there?
I know, as long as it's zoned for that, it won't be a problem, but they'll need a building permit.
Yeah.
He's got a building permit, if they put a sign up, they'll probably need a sign permit.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Get out.
All right. Well, here it is. Okay. Don?
All I got is Jenny did a heck of a job with a containment.
Oh, my God, that's about enough.
That's all I have.
No, thanks, no, thanks, Don.
Good thing we didn't hire a lawyer, huh?
Water and sewer, everything, uh, street, Gordy?
Nelson.
And everything is going well for you out at the, uh?
So far.
Electrics?
I got a couple of things. Of course, you got your invitations, I wish somebody would come, I wish you would see what you guys own, 'cause...
I'm gonna try to make it.
You know, you own more than that facility that they wanna show you, but, but anyway, Jenny, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. We were asked to do an inventory of transmission equipment?
Yeah.
You got that memo?
I got the email, I just, it looks like I'm gonna have to wrestle Gordy to get him to help me with that and, that, it won't be fun, so.
It won't be fun, huh?
No, I emailed Dave back to get some more specifics, 'cause if we, he wants inventory of every transformer in town, we gotta go through them anyway for the PCB stuff and so, it's probably something we should have inventory of anyway.
Okay, then, that energy choice thing?
Don reviewed it.
You reviewed that, Don?
I did.
That's a, uh... Oh, I had somebody in town ask me about an electrical late fee. He said he was missing, I, I don't, this was the story that I got, he was missing one month or he missed one month and they wanted to disconnect him. And I says, I thought there was a process, like a couple of months and then you...
Nope, it's every month.
One month?
Yep.
Okay.
The bills are due the fifteenth, you get a late fee on like the sixteenth.
Okay, I guess that's where it would happen.
Yeah, and then along with that, you get your notice that you're delinquent and then the disconnection occurs at the end of the month or the following week or two, but no, we do try to disconnect every month. Gordy loves it, it's his favorite day.
It's his favorite. Well, I, anyway, I was just looking in a full, I, you know, I'm not supposed to disclose some things and I'm not sure about this one, but we got our energy, what we pay for energy, I just want you to know it's significantly, significantly, significantly lower than you would be if you were on Excel. One last question, what's going on with all these plants and bales of hay out here by the Masonic Building?
Oh, she's got a community garden or something out there, I think, that, um, oh, gosh.
I just saw a whole bunch of pots out there and...
That's what I've heard.
Bales of hay.
I don't...
They plant flowers in these bales, supposedly.
Oh, yeah, I've seen strong bale gardening, yeah.
Vegetables, a garden.
Okay, then you know more about it than I do, so.
Well, I just see this stuff out there and I was wondering what was happening, you know? Okay, I'm done.
All right, fire chief, ambulance, Karen.
So I'll keep this short and sweet, what I am looking for this month is a blessing from the council to sell the Crown Vic. We got it all stripped down and it's parked on the south side of the PD there, so we need to sell it. I did talk to one gentleman who sells government cars in Golden Valley, sight unseen, he gave me a, he said he can give me twenty-eight hundred dollars for it. However, I, I know there's the possibility to admin bid, I don't know a lot about min bid, it sounds like a lot of kinda messing around when it would be easier just to take bids locally. I know Dave does a lot of min bid, so if we did that, I would enlist his help, I would have Dave's auto, but we talked today about just taking bids in town and then I can call this gentleman in Golden Valley and tell him that he can make a bid. They are taking a different vehicle, one of our forfeitures. So...
That van?
No, no, not the van, it's just a little five-speed.
Well, what we, we talked about is she does have somebody who's interested in putting in a bid if we would sell it out to bids.
So we'll start it out at that amount of money?
Well, you can't really start out, you put it out on bids, just like we did with the van and whatever comes in, comes in. We have the right to reject any or all bids, but I mean...
Blue book's around four thousand on it, so.
If you would bank this out for an actual bid, that would be, you would have that, at least.
So it's all cleaned out, it's ready to go.
I'll make a motion, we should go for it.
Okay, so you're making a motion that we put it out to bids, put it in the paper, under the same conditions as the last time?
Yeah, I'll run it next week, we can run it for three weeks and open the bids at the July council meeting.
Sounds good. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, now proceed the vote, all who are in favor say aye. All who oppose, same side. Motion carries. I didn't have this on here, but going back to that tax, yes, thank you, Jenny. I think one of the questions is what's gonna happen with the money that we, we get from last year's taxes? That'll be coming out of tax roll?
Next year.
Next year. But my feeling is, and that's what I'll ask the council to do, is wherever we cut that from last year, let's put it back into those books.
Absolutely.
Sure.
So we're not going to go out and buy a, a new car for our administrator to drive around here.
Sure, you praise me and then why get, oh, that's it, uh-huh, okay, fine.
Yeah, so that money is not going to be wasted. That's all I have, I will, give a motion to adjourn, thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye. I don't think anybody would be against it.
I wrote one up, I said that I'm allowed by...